All right, I have a thumbs up, which means we are Facebook Live for our work session. This is a Happy Valentine's Day to everybody. This is February the 14th, and we are preparing through this work session for our meeting of February the 18th. So, I'd like to welcome everyone here. And what I've got for us is a learning exercise this morning is Mr. Borg, Mr. Timothy Borg, from the Starkville-Ottawa-Hawk County School District, or I'm sorry, Starkville-Ottawa-Hawk County Consolidated School District, is here to give us some information on 16th Section land, because we've had that discussion as a part of a request from the last board meeting, the board meeting prior to that. And so it's coming up on this board meeting, but I thought it would be interesting for the board for Mr. Borg to give us a little bit of information associated with 16th Section land and how the city, or I'm sorry, how the school district handles that. And then Mr. Havilin is going to give us just sort of an update on how that particular section is zoned and where it lies in the city. So, Mr. Borg, thank you so much for being here, we appreciate it. If you don't mind, you can come down to the end there, and that way everybody can see you and hear you clearly.
Can we sit, stand?
Sit, whatever makes you comfortable, it's just fine. Sitting is perfect.
Thank you again, I'm Timothy Borg, and I've been here at Starkville since 97 as a student at Mississippi State, and I've been here ever since. Hattiesburg made it, but now Starkville is my home. I've been with the school system now for 23 years, taught, been in administration now. I have been there at the central office for the last, I don't know, six or seven years, and just took over. I don't know if I took it over, or if I was just voluntold that I was going to do it. I think it was more of the latter. But here I am over at 16th Section land, and I currently oversee accountability accreditation assessment, discipline, and 16th Section land for the school district. And of course, with some of the recent things that have been brought to the board, of course, to approve of one particular piece of property, and there was some, just the process, I guess, in that particular instance, was not done in the correct way, and I will definitely say just that. I took over this particular section, like I said, almost two years ago, July will make two years, and my first order of business, I guess, was just to learn. I knew not too much about 16th Section land, was to learn, review what we had, and then just to straighten things out. My first year, I probably didn't lease, I wouldn't say the complete year, probably the first 10 months, I leased no land, because as I began to research and uncover things, I saw that there was a number of things that needed to be cleaned up. The more I dug, the more I found out that I didn't like. And so, that's what I started doing initially, just trying to clean things up. Towards the end of the first year, that's when we started, we opened up and began to lease some properties, because I just wanted to have a good handle on what we currently had. Is everything cleaned? I tell you, no, it is not. Just with the matter that came before the board, that has, you know, gone back and forth just with that matter, of course, we've been doing some research and seeing where if we could replace, take the young lady to another place, and then we discovered some more issues, even with that. Currently, that's where we are with that. But, like I said, I talked with the mayor, spoke with Mr. Havilin, we met, sat down and met, and we've gotten things straightened out on my end. And again, you know, it was just simply things were not transferred. We're not here to blame anyone, it's just that. Didn't know, if I don't know, I can't do. Now that we know, actually, the application that came before you all, I don't know, I think the initial one, at that particular moment, I had three others sitting on my desk to possibly be placed on the Lewisville corridor. After I became aware, after our meeting with, actually, Mr. Havilin, after I became aware of some past information that was communicated to a former individual that was over, the 16th Section land for the school district that we contracted with, that information was not translated to us. When it was, I actually denied those three that were sitting on my desk after this one, right? And so, again, you know, I'm a rule follower, as much as I can. I am, I'm a rule follower. If I know, then I do it. If I don't know, then there may be some times that I don't follow it simply because of me not knowing, you know? And 16th Section land, of course, we have a lot of 16th Section land, especially now that we've consolidated since 2015, and to a certain degree, I am the sole overseer of all 16th Section land in Ottawa-Hawk County. And so, of course, we cannot police it like we should, but when issues come up, when it's brought to our attention, then we do address it. Not just that, but I do. It's kind of difficult, being a public school landlord as well, because that's what it comes down to. I do, there are some days that all I do is travel throughout the district to put my eyes on, to talk to individuals that are on that own, on 16th Section land. Of course, the matter, I guess, that came up to the board, that process, if I would have known what I know now, I would have never even began the process of issuing the lease to the young lady that came up. Again, I've had three others sitting on my desk, and I've denied all of those from coming on to the Lewisville corridor. So, that's just something that we're, that's just something that we're correcting, you know? And so, where are we with that, okay? Where are we with that? Of course, we're trying our best to relocate her to another particular piece, but we have not been, again, I thought, again, I thought we were good with relocating her to a piece of property on Sand Road, but as I began to dig into that property, we found out, I discovered that there are issues with that particular property as we speak. There are certain things that I don't want to say here. I can, I could address you personally and give you more insight into that, but we found out issues that we're digging into now concerning that particular piece of property on Sand Road, and why that particular piece of property, which, again, we're trying to help. The young lady has spent, to my knowledge, about $1,500 for clearing the property, and so, of course, we can't reimburse that $1,500, $1,500 to her for clearing that property. So, we were trying to locate property that was already cleared, to place her there. Once we found a particular piece, now, there are some issues, and the issues originated with the individual who was once over the 16th Section property that was, that the district contracted with, okay? So, that is, it's trying to be worked out, but it's not going to be worked out in a timeframe by which the young lady needs it worked out. She's already paid a down payment for her mobile home. It needs, to my knowledge, it needs to be moved within a timeframe of 30 days. We're trying to get all of that worked out on our part of getting this property, getting the issues worked out with the property within 30 days, but it's, it's not seeming like we'll be able to do it in that 30-day timeframe, okay?
You're getting surveys, trying to get surveys done, right?
Trying to get surveys done, but then it's just not a survey. It is, it is some issues with who it's been assigned to.
Okay, just clearing up some of that in.
Yeah, it's, it's more than just a survey. So, it's going to have to, it's more than likely, we're, no, not more than likely, we're going to have to get our school attorneys involved. I've already debriefed our superintendent, and we've got to get our school board attorneys involved for this particular piece of property.
Well, I don't want you to, I don't want you to get out on a limb there.
Right, that's why I'm saying, I'm just trying to share as much as I can. So, that's, that's kind of, kind of where we are with this. And again, if I would have known, it probably would have been best for me to come to the board meetings where the young lady was, and I would have showed up, it's no problem. Now, moving forward, right, moving forward, I believe things are going to be fine, because I'm there, and I'm making sure that all of this is done in the way it should be done. And so, you can, that's, it's my job now, so I'm supposed to do that. And so, it's going to be done correctly. I've had tenants to come in prior to, to this meeting today, and I've told them, no, you have to go to the board to get approved first, and then once that's approved, you come back to me, and then we will do what we need to do from there, right? So, again, if I would have known.
Sure.
If I would have known. Again, you know, Mr. Havilin shared with me the information that was shared with that particular individual that was hired by the school district, an email from 2020, 2019, 2020 timeframe, where it was communicated and saw it, and that's what I wanted to lay my eyes on, but that information was not translated to me, that's all I wanted to say with that.
Not, not assuming to throw you under the bus at all, but I just wanted to have the board be aware of the situation.
Absolutely, and I don't consider that as being thrown under the bus, people do. I've got a strong enough back to take it, you know? It is what it is. If I don't, if I don't know, then I cannot do it, period, you know? And so, now that we're in this situation, we're just, I'm trying to do what I can on my part, and, you know, whatever this city can do to assist in this, I definitely ask you all to assist if you can.
Well, we appreciate you, Mr. Borg.
So, that's, that's where I am. This probably won't be the first time that you will see me at these meetings, because I'm going to make sure that whatever we do moving forward, and it has to be approved by this board, where my schedule permits, I will be here to speak to whatever issues, whatever questions, whatever concerns that you may have, because I would definitely want us, the school district and the city, to be a team to work together to move, to move forward. I truly believe that's a good issue.
I appreciate that. You got a question?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mr. Borg.
Yes, sir.
These other three properties, do they, the Nile and those, do they have anything to do with the city?
Yes, they were, they were, they were on that Lewisville corridor, right? And so, once I came aware of the statutes for this, I denied them prior to the application ever coming here to that board, right?
So, they don't find themselves in the same position?
So, they won't find themselves into this same position.
A question, a question to, what's happened to you? What is the real reason that we have denied people to come over on the Lewisville corridor? What is the real reason, the complete reason? Why are we doing that?
That's basically how we've got it zoned, and part of the reason for that is because we wanted to have that corridor be aesthetically pleasing and not have the dilapidated trailers and that sort of thing that have come up there.
Wait a minute, come, come, come to me better than that. You said pleasing, pleasing.
Yeah.
Wait, 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 wait. Pleasing, what pleasing does she got to please? You already got all accounted, she got to RV place down there, that's pleasing? I mean, come on, come to me better than that. Don't, don't, don't tell me it's some pleasing dilapidated, how do you know a manufactured home will be dilapidated?
I don't know that, but that's what we're not.
Why would you say that? I think that's an insult to it.
Well, it's not intended to be an insult, but manufactured homes is not what we were trying to have in that corridor.
What's the difference between RV and a manufactured home? What's the difference?
The RV, the RV is supposedly temporary, is a temporary use, because they come and go. When we have manufactured home site, it's pines. So, it is in place and it is accessible, but we don't have any other manu, well, yeah, we do, we have the one that's.
There's a couple of them.
Yeah, there are a couple of them.
Most of them are off the street.
I'm sorry?
Most of them are off the street, it's like pines.
Yes, yeah, they're all.
Oh, that's American, do it, might clean, please, all of them African, middle tone, that girl, please, that word offended me when you said that pleasing, that kind of word offended me.
Well, it's not, it's not about.
We all, we all not filter nasty.
There's not all race, this is not race driven.
Come on.
This is not race driven.
Well, you said it, that word, that word.
No, it has nothing to do with it. It has to do with manufacturing.
No, no, no. Come on, I do, you worry you from, I'm doing.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Borg, appreciate you being here. Any other questions of Mr. Borg? No?
I, yeah, I would like to commend you for what you're working through.
Yes, sir.
I was on P and Z for six years, I mean, everybody else knows this, I've not met you before.
Yes, sir.
And along with Alderman too. And we had some issues with the gentleman you were speaking about before, you know, and I'm not sure, I would be surprised, or I wouldn't be surprised, if you don't find out that some of those leases, they're not really surveys, I'm not so sure that he just didn't draw some legal descriptions, you know, on some of those, and, you know, one in particular where he had leased a piece of property, and then that TDA easement came across it, you know, and that young lady wasn't even able to use that lot. So, again, I commend you for what you're doing, you've got a tough job to go out there, go, you know, go and get that sorted out.
Yes, sir.
So, you can, sound like you've got it.
We appreciate that, and what you have mentioned of is absolutely correct, it's just not one or two. We've encountered several properties throughout Ottawa-Hawk County that there is no legal surveys on. And so, I've taken on my duty, you know, and it's costing the district, but I just believe it, that every property that I have come across, or that we are, we are coming across, that does not have a legal survey, we are getting a legal survey done. That survey should be done prior to the lease, but if a person is there and there is no legal survey on that property, we're calling the tenants, and there's going to be people in your yard, and we are getting legal surveys done on any property that I can, that I have found that didn't have a legal survey on. And since I've taken over, moving forward, we don't even write a lease without a legal survey done with that property. But yes, sir, we found not one, not two, not 10, not 15.
I can imagine.
Not 20, not 30. We've, we found many properties that do not have legal surveys done, and we're doing our best to get all of that cleaned up.
Thank you for that, from the city's perspective anyway.
Yes, sir.
I know the county, the school district would be better off if our, yes, I know.
I would just like to say that it is always harder to clean up problems than it is to get it right on the front end, and so, that's, I'm glad that we're at that point of trying to get it right on the front end and not have to deal with what comes up decades after sometimes.
Absolutely, absolutely.
All right, thank you again, appreciate you being here, for your time.
Absolutely.
Mr. Havilin, if you could show exactly what, where that 16th Section land is located and exactly how it is zoned.
Yes, and I want to echo Alderman Brooks and Sister Roger, Mr. Borg, that was a great job fixing this up to this point. So, this is a map shown all of Ottawa County, the red squares will identify all the 16th Section properties within the county, and then the black lines are the city's limited boundaries. So, you can see there is only one 16th Section that falls within the city limits. That area was brought into the city sometime, I think in the late 90s annexation, and then the initial zoning that was placed on that is shown in this map, this is the original zoning map, but the zoning never changed until it was updated in 2019. So, it had a portion that was industrial, R5 multifamily residential, C2 commercial, which is kind of a highway commercial with a sort of odd, and then a C1 commercial, which is like a neighborhood commercial. And you can see the chart at the bottom, even back then, the only two areas that are manufactured, and they used the term mobile home back then, were the only areas that were allowed in was R5 and C2, and both of those were by a conditional use process, which is virtually identical to the special exception process. It's two public hearings, one with P and Z, then one with the board of Alderman. Then in 2016, we updated our comprehensive plan, and in that they had future land uses, they refer to them as place types, and as you can see in that little square where it's labeled 16th Section, there were two place types in there, one was special and the other one was rural neighborhood. The special category includes stuff like industrial, educational, and institutional, the city of the property, educational facilities, and then obviously industrial. So, when we converted that as a zone in 2019, there were three zoning types that were placed onto it, industrial, special education, and then the rest of it was rural neighborhood. And then again, we put the use of a manufactured home as a special exception that's only allowed in the RN zoning district for this area. And this map has a lot of information on it, so you can kind of see the areas that were identified back in 2018. I went all the way back to 2004 trying to find cases, and there was really nothing popped up until 2018. So, since 2018, the ones that are listed right there are the only ones that have come forward and been approved, and they're kind of labeled on the little areas on the side. Since then, from what we can tell, only about one of those has been placed in Area P on the correct lot. There's a couple of them that we're not sure, it's kind of strat on the line, we don't really know which lot it's on. And even the one that's in question on Lewisville was approved, but then they never acted on it, so that approval expired. That was in 2019, and that was actually prior to the Unified Development Code, that was in the old code and the old. That was in the old code and the old criteria. And then once the area is approved, then it has to meet the dimensional standards, which are also in the code. So the area that they have to put the school needs to carve out, needs to be at least forty thousand square feet, have at least a hundred feet of frontage, and it has the setbacks for how it's supposed to be situated on the lot. So that's just to kind of show you the history of the zoning and the land use and regulations that we've done on sixteen sections since then. Are there any questions?
Any questions of Mr. Havelin? So that entire, that entire square there?
Yes, I'm sorry, the red area is the entire section.
Yeah. And along the west side of Lewisville Street, you've got a lot of floodplain area up in there?
Uh, yes, when you get up toward, toward the top, yeah, there's a lot of floodplain. And there's also, I guess, a utility power line that ran through the site several years back. You can kind of see the tree line how it's been cut out.
That's the TDA?
Yes.
TDA power?
Which clipped a couple of the sites that they were trying to-
I was going to say, that's the lot you referring to that had the TDA power line go through it? All right, any questions of the town?
Just one last thing. Several of the ones that are shown in the aerial photos, if you go back to like 1996, there's a handful of them that have been there since then. So they were, they predate our process and predate the initiative.
In fact, we've got a couple of dilapidated properties that are sitting on Sam Road that we're going to be looking at.
Yes, they're, they're by rear.
Yeah, they're not dilapidated, but they're dilapidated. All right, thank you so much. Appreciate it. We will move to the agenda. So we have two sets of minutes. Mr. Huskerson, pardon, anything about any of those? We'll put those on consent. And then I'll try to remind everybody about absentee voting, which starts on, actually, the day of the board meeting. So it starts on the eighteenth. And that'll be our work hours from eight until five.
And the two Saturdays preceding the election.
Right, and that'll be from eight till noon?
Eight till noon.
Two Saturdays.
Two Saturdays, from eight till noon.
From eight till noon, yeah. Then we'll have the public hearing. This will be a dilapidated structure that is on Scale Street, so we'll be having that as a public hearing. So obviously not, not for consent purposes on that, but you'll be getting your usual pictures and the things associated with it being declared under 211911. Then under Mayor's Business, there's a resolution. So we are asking for, from the state, and I have been in touch with Senator Williams and Representative Robertson, and I emailed with Representative Taylor about this need that we have for wastewater treatment plant funding. And so they asked me if the board would pass a resolution requesting such funding. And so I asked Mr. Kemp to give me a rough idea of how much we would need, or how much would be helpful for us to complete the aerator side project. And so it's four, I think he sent me something with pennies, and it's four million eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that's actually a call out in that resolution. So that is basically at the request of our representative, so that we can put in that collective request for funding from the state as an entity. So if anybody have any issues with doing that?
I did not get the resolution in the paper packets. I will email it to y'all this afternoon.
Okay, I was going to say, I can either, but it is in the e packet.
It's in the e packet, I'm on it.
Consent for that one?
Consent.
All right. And then we have the reconsideration of the request for that special use, for a special exception for replacement of a manufactured home. That was part of the discussion earlier. And then we also have a consideration application for a freeport warehouse license, which we will not be able to put on consent because Mr. Alderman Ruck will have a conflict, so it can't go on consent. So he'll have to recuse himself from that one as he's employed by the folks that are making that request, so. But that information is in the package as well, right?
Okay.
And we've not done one of these, at least not during the last twenty years that I've been.
Did we not do one for Garen?
We did, we did one for Garen four years ago.
Was it? Really? I just slipped right by that, I didn't even remember that we did a freeport. Well, they were already in town, I didn't register it as something new. This is, this is a new one, yeah, that was a re-
He stated that they had, Glow has a large new contract, so they will be, the reason they're coming now is because their warehouse will be full.
Yeah.
They're manufacturing and growing.
Cool, okay. All right, and then community development planning, Mr. Havelin, what we got here? This is the software?
Yes.
You want to make that a little bit of a presentation there?
Sure, sure, sure. Mr. McCaskey? I don't have a formal presentation for it, but so essentially OpenGov is a software solution we're looking at to replace MyGov, which is currently what we use for our inspections, plan reviews, permitting, just essentially everything where they come up to the top floor and they're dealing with this. So OpenGov is a solution that provides more functionality, is more customer friendly, and will allow for us to better track and then basically send you all information as well in the public regarding things like ride away construction. I know we've had some issues being able to pinpoint exactly where some of our franchise agreements are working, when they're working, how they're working. So this new system has just way more functionality. It's way more accurate, and the implementation will be able to get things right, like address tables, where, you know, in real time, we'll be able to send you all maps regarding current permitting, past permitting. And then hopefully in the future, we might see it expand into areas like asset management and other items that will lead to the potential future. But essentially, this is the, this is the base building block. With this, we essentially are able to make smaller payments for much larger functionality down the line.
And Tupelo is currently, has just engaged these folks, and who else is it? Har- not Camp, Jackson County?
Yes, yes, Jackson and Tupelo. In which Tupelo actually just recently did it. And one of the main, the key factors for that is this is actually under a NASCO agreement, which is under the state contract through the Mississippi Department of Technology, though their name might be a little different than that. But essentially, this has already gone through state level bid processes, through the National Association of State Procurement Officers. So this has already been through about forty different levels of review by state level officials. It is actually available nationwide for those who opt into that program, which the state of Mississippi is, which is then adopted by the director for state IT at Mississippi.
Kesa. All right.
Additional resights, Ken?
And the funding source is going to be sort of a trade off between what we would pay for-
Timing of recognition of some revenue.
Yeah.
And, and that's for the implementation piece of it. The other is just going to be a trade off of the old software for the new.
Yeah. And to add one side note to the potential for funding, this is taking advantage of basically being able to take multiple things that we're paying for currently and pushing it all to one. So now we're not asking customers to use one piece of software to understand the other piece of software, one holistic system, where hopefully we'll see that when people enter that city, they aren't running to a bunch of different places. And if they are, like some towns are, it does still migrate all the data into one place, so that staff isn't saying, we've got different reports from different people, saying, take care of them.
Much more user friendly and also on the staff side.
All right. As somebody that struggles through the MyGov system, this sounds really good. I've had to call Lyle and Mr. Havelin on numerous occasions.
Yeah.
So it sounded really good.
The presentation that they made looked really, looked really good, and I think staff was all, was pleased with the, with the opportunities, so. Okay, all right. Can we do consent for that one? Okay. And then we have the updated disabilities plan, which Mr. McCaskey is absolutely up in the middle of.
Thrilled, thrilled about. This one, this one's been about a year coming. So we did do a public input session on it. So this is an update to our ADA transition plan, which I believe the previous version of this was done in 2011. And this is what we would consider like a living document. And so as we go into the future, you'll probably see this coming through the board probably annually. And that's mainly to make updates to what has actually been fixed, what is planning to be fixed as we identify things out in public. So 2025 update, obviously, we're looking at a lot of the same things. You know, the Americans with Disabilities Act has been around since the early 1990s. Our ADA coordinator is Steve McCallum in the building department, so I guess starting that off. If anybody has any issues, of course, they can contact City of Sartreville at ADA@cityofsartreville.org. This has taken a year, just because we went out and we've identified all the sidewalks in town. And basically, we're assigning them to assets to track into the future. And we want to make sure that as we're identifying those assets, that we are actually going in and creating documentation as far as what is wrong. Part of that's important because we want to be able to prove to people that, you know, we are taking their concerns seriously. And we also want to make sure that when we go and address it, that we're able to group together similar projects and do this fairly, or more cost effectively. So if we have a bunch of issues together, we can try and do them. And this actual presentation is available at cityofsartreville.org/ADA. And if you actually do come into, you are able to click on the individual items inside of the map, and it'll actually show you the representations of items that we found on in noncompliance. The one I accidentally just clicked there has actually already been fixed by the engineering department and streets department. They went out and made that fix a few weeks ago. And you'll find that there's a lot of these items that within this past year of us doing this plan have been addressed, in particular by engineering and streets department going out and basically doing some additional work. We did, the mayor did authorize last year, it was about, it was like a couple of grand or a few thousand dollars. We basically were able to get a lidar software for phones, where we were able to go and do five miles and go through and do scans, where they sent us back information that engineers looked at, and there it will tell us what's wrong. So we have, I think I have about fifty different reports, once again, going down this street, showing us the individual items that need to be taken. And this is important for you guys and for us, because as we move towards being compliant with the ADA, it's important that if there is ever a particular occurrence, is that we are able to prove that we're making substantial steps for being compliant.
Also helps us get those grants that we work on for transportation grants.
Hundred percent. And the great thing about these is they're very objective. They generally show exactly what's going on. The action log we've created, which is now a shared spreadsheet, they can also be accessed online. And through staff is used to track essentially all the things that we're getting that are coming in, if they're on a current plan. So of course, when we look at Main Street, obviously, if we do the Main Street rebuild in the future, that's all pretty much been planned out to be fixed. And we're able to basically make sure that we're holding ourselves accountable for them.
With.
Yes.
I was going to say.
So history of progress. In 2011, they did a study, and essentially, we had a lot of things like the new city hall being built, the police department being remodeled. Obviously, we've had new facilities built with our ADA coordinator being able to look at them. So Coroner's Center, Travis Alva Center had some work done, and then the Needmore Community Center being brought up. There was twenty seven intersections that were listed as being brought up back in 2011, as well as, I believe, Joel, our team, y'all recently got audio listening devices for the courtroom downstairs, which we're working on getting signage, that way people know. So there's been a lot of significant progress between now and then. And the important thing is, is that we're just making sure we've got documentation of it. These are actually all pictures just from these last few weeks of where streets, engineering have gone out and marked items for poly foam, potential filling, for getting things ground down. There's a lot more progress to make, but of course, you know, you are more welcome to reach out to us and give us all the lettuces now.
It's a great picture, Curtis.
This is a jab at me. So feel free to reach out to us. Of course, once again, ADA coordinator, Steve McCallum, we have to make sure that's very apparent to everybody.
Yes, okay. All right, any questions from McCaskey about the ADA transition? All right, and we do need to adopt this, so can we do consent for that one?
Consent.
Okay. Then a request for final plat approval, Mr. Havelin?
Yeah, the first one is the Dutch subdivision. This is the former McDonald's location across from Kroger. It was approved, so we were back, and they ran into some issues with adjacent proprietors. They kind of worked through those issues, and now they're just bringing it back and finalize it, so that if they go to sell in the future, they'll make it easier to transfer the property. And it's went through DRC, comments were made, they addressed them to staff and the group.
So to be clear, there's no proposed development, it's just cleaning up and for-
And McDonald's Corp. has already de-franchised the building, but taken all their logo stuff down.
Yeah.
And there's a first sales sign.
Okay, all right. It was approved, no, no issues?
No issues.
No issues, all right. Consent for that one?
Consent.
Okay. And then we have a final plat approval at Mill, and you can explain that one.
This one's kind of unusual.
It is.
On the east side of Mill Street, closest to Russell, there's two parcels. One that has the parking lot that's associated with Bugshot's, and then the other one's the vacant lot on the south side of the drive that goes in front of the mill. So currently, Mr. Castbury owns that parking lot in the entrance drive, and the foundation owns the lot to the south. So it's just transferring the drive, like moving the property line to the north, so the drive falls into the foundation's property, not Castbury's.
Okay, so just shifting, shifting ownership a little bit?
Yeah, you can see right here where the line is, it's pointed to, and you go to the next one. One more after that. And on this plat, you can see it's just pushing it further north. And then the gray area of the plat, we were kind of confused when we first saw it, that's just illustrate where the access is.
Okay, so that's going to be access from Mr. Castbury?
They still have access, it's been all parties.
No, no issues there.
It's just changed the ownership of the way it is.
Okay, all right. Consent for that one?
Consent.
Okay. And then engineering, Mr. Burnett?
Yes, ma'am, I can talk to these. I believe the first is a CNI contract with the golfer.
To Spring Street, Spring?
Exactly, for Spring Street.
Yes.
Yes. This is for the construction engineering inspection for the NDOT TA project. This will connect the moldings after Spring Street down to Locksaway. And so this is the, for just the engineering inspection, which we're not requiring.
Consent for that one?
Consent.
Okay. And then you've got the low bid for ADA improvements project?
Yeah, it's a lot of good job. This is in the same spirit of that, as you overlay streets, you're technically required by the DOJ to provide curb cuts. There's no ramps, so this is me and Ted. And it will be also included in the ADA accomplishments.
Okay, all right. Consent for that one?
Consent.
And then we have, last but not least, we have a task order for geotechnical road borings. And that's throughout the community, but with some concentration in the Highland Estates area. Is that for it?
It is, we've got a few roads that anybody put toward those roads, in my opinion, would be good money to bad. And so we really need to find out what is the issue underneath the existing pavement before we spend more money out there.
Okay.
So that's the intent.
Consent for that one?
Consent.
Okay. We'll skip past the flame stocket. We've got acceptance of January financials, anything about those, Ms. Harden, you want to share?
No, I still have to.
Typical consent for that one? And then election system software, which we don't have a whole lot of choice. We got an election, and we're going to have to do something with it. So is anything about this that we need to know from the software standpoint?
No, it's a little higher than in the past, but this will bring a technician on site. These are new machines with the scan, that they'll be here the night before to set up the machines, they'll be here all day the day of, and then that night to download them. So we'll have, the plan is we will have results within thirty minutes of the closing.
Technical expertise to make sure we do.
We will have it all here.
Results from the machine voting.
From the machine voting, right. We'll have a machine voting.
Okay, consent for that?
Consent.
Okay. And then fire department, this is a hazardous materials grant with a twenty percent match. So anything about that one? There it is. Anything about that one you want the board to be aware of?
It's basically the same grant that we had in the past. We were just requesting permission to apply again.
Okay, all right. Consent for that one? Okay. And then HR, Mr. Ashford, anything about any of these? These are all, well, we do have one.
The first two are replacements position.
Okay, all right.
Third one, we're asking for a temporary position in utilities. I detailed it out with the-
Okay, all right, but it is temporary position?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and it's in budgetary issue? All right, consent for that one?
Consent.
Okay. And then IT, Joel, this is just a renewal.
Yes, ma'am, it's a renewal of the alert system. The price did go up about three thousand dollars from previous years. The same functionality as before, but the price did give up.
Okay, as prices did.
As prices did.
All right. Consent for that one?
Consent.
All right. And then on the parks, this is also, you got it?
Got it. The first is for, this is really cool, I have to give Chris and Doug credit on this, but this is a native seed planting. We have a lot of areas of cornerstone that are really just vast areas of grass, and they're having to mow those biweekly. This will install native perennials and annuals instead of the grass, so it cuts the cutting down once a year. And it also is a polydender species, so it's really good for the environment.
It's cost saver as well as beautification, as well as sort of a nature thing. And that's all of cornerstone, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And may I add to that? Anybody who's ever planted plants know that it's important to get the right plant in the right place, and also that it takes a couple of years for them to get established. So year one will look okay, as time goes by, it will look better and better, so.
And they're all native?
They are all native.
Yeah, well, that's part of that whole-
Right, in the right place.
Yeah, less, less work to keep it going, so. Consent for that one?
Consent.
All right. And then Low Quote from Evergreen for planting seventeen trees at Cornerstone Park. And so this is the TDA grant?
This will finish up the TDA grant, you see, there's a no match grant.
And so that would be consent? All right, police chief? Anything you wish to share with the board about any of these items?
Just an explanation out, the first one is reporting this critical for investigations, bomb calls, stuff like that. It's a clear requirement.